Was liability and you said that we as a city will not incur any liability with the use of the reservoir. So that was one of the major obstacles of not being able to use it. Another one was a request, and I think it was more, more of as a request from gaming fish to allow the reservoir to not be fished for two years. Not if we, even though that was a quick, a request, not a mandate, we're pretty close to two years anyhow. So I'm anxious to know, are there any other obstacles that we must take care of before we can open that up to our residents?
Okay. I'll tell you what, I would say anyone needs to be.
Let me speak, the only comment I would make, I think, the, the one thing we would have to address would be policing the reservoir. And that would be at the boat launch and, and someone there to make sure that things are going the way they should be because, you know, I think there's, there's been uses, people using the reservoir that, you know, I guess you're not supposed to use it at all now, but, but I, I don't know how much it would cost to police it or what we would have to do if we had to provide parking or doing anything else like that. So there, there might be some ancillary costs in that respect, but we have to find out.
Well, one thing that maybe I suggest is that we could, if we were to ask Mr. Wood, Mr. Dyer, and Mr. Otavio to bring back to us at the next meeting, after they have met and discussed this issue, what are the stumbling blocks or the roadblocks that would keep us from legal to get to utilize that? Let, and the legal aspect of it, the reservoir manager and the city manager, if they could meet and discuss that.
We have met and discussed it, and I think, Mr. Huffman, the biggest single stumbling block is simply having the property identified and acquired. And we, we can be more definitive and will be more definitive if we need to at the next meeting. Mr. Dyer, Mr. Otavio, and I met with Paul Michael from the TPA Technology Park, I guess, ten days, two weeks ago. And our primary interest in, in that discussion was to see if we could use the property that's there at the end of Fakecom Road which sort of lends itself best to, to that purpose. They didn't say no, but they didn't say yes. That's the property that has been identified by staff thus far, Mr. West and, and Mr. Otavio in particular, as being the most logical for us to develop and use. As of us going and acquiring a piece of property, that would probably require significantly more side work. The reservoir management plan says that the city can build on city property, one public access. That's the, that's the management plan. The site plans approved by the city prior to adoption of the, of the reservoir management plan, the site plan for TPA allowed a dock for TPA, which the, the reservoir plan sort of, I don't know, rules that are not, but at least it contradicts it. Now, we did approach, Mr. Dyer and I did approach Fair Green a year or eighteen months ago, and, and specifically requested that, that, that that community give us a property that we could be used or we leased it or what, but that could be used as a public launch. And, and Fair Green denied us that request at that time. So that's, by process of elimination, it just sort of narrowed us, narrowed things down. But, Bobby, can you elaborate or would you elaborate on that, I'm sure, further?
Well, I think that the biggest impediment is acquiring the property. The city doesn't own any property other than where the reservoir management, manager's office would be. All around the reservoir, there's only one public access permitted, one dock and one boat launch. They don't necessarily have to be in the same place under the reservoir management plan. Now, that reservoir management plan could be amended, but it has to be approved by the EPD. So if there were other ideas and other possibilities, we, they're not necessarily prohibited, we just have to get permission to do those. But as it stands right now, the reservoir manager, Mr. Otavio, can designate a public area, which is where the boat launch, boat ramp and the dock would be.
It seems to me, though, we're talking about two issues here. We're talking about building a public point of access in, in boat launch picnic area versus saying this lake is available for public use if you get that. I mean, if you can walk in there or if you can drive in and park on some of the property that is owned by the city even for the, for the manager's building there, the office building, looks to me like what's to keep you from walking down, dragging a canoe down there and getting in?
Well, you can't get to that area. It, it, but that area is fenced and you can't get to the area, I don't think, that you're talking about.
But I see your point, there's also other land, if you own a piece of, there's other people that own land on there. I mean, that, I, I agree, there's two different issues here. If, if you can get permission from somebody to drag a boat in there and put it in there, what's stopping?
So the reservoir management plan prohibits access to like except for through the public access area, if I remember that right?
The responsible thing for us to do is not encourage people to trespass. The responsible thing for us to do is identify a public launch site.
So what you're, what you're saying here is that people in your development, your area, Great Sky, cannot walk down and put a canoe in that reservoir? That's what you just said, right?
Yes.
Okay.
According to the reservoir management plan, that's prohibited.
The, the most logical place for the launching is obviously as you identified. I would think that the city, and I wasn't around then, but it's done plenty enough for the, was it TPA that?
TPA.
TPA.
Right.
That we, the city has done enough for them that they should allow us to have some type of access through that piece of property. Would, would that be fair to say?
There's an issue, there's another issue that involves them, Mr. Huffman, in, in the site plan that allows them that dock. And they, they, they understand that the reservoir management plan contradicts that. But they really want their water access because they feel like the city committed that to them. And so that's sort of the. Where the little quid pro quo, I guess, hang up is with respect to the Fakecom Road something.
We don't want a dock. Don't need a dock.
The type of boats that are, vessels going in there are going to be canoes, kayaks, and best, a John boat.
Yeah, I would think you want a dock simply because whoever brings that John boat in, they bring you on a trailer, it's probably going to want a, for a long.
But, but, yeah, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think, I don't think our dock is what's holding up, TPA, I, I don't think that's holding up TPA.
All I'd like to have TPA is give us access to where we can put some crush and run down there, to park and allow them to go in. And that's all they really need. As far as the policing of it, that, that is a, an issue that, sure, there will probably be some people trying to access it, particularly off reservoir pathway. And that, that parking on there would be different.
So we have a, let me back up here, we have a, a plan that says you can only access through a public access point, and which we don't have at this point.
Yes.
And also, there is no policing of that public access point as far as knowing who uses it and who doesn't use it. There's no requirement for that at all, as far as you know.
There's no requirement in the plan that it be structured in any particular way.
Require people to go in at one point, but nobody's there and see if that's where they're going to land on it.
Well, I think the police are already patrolling for people that are on, that are on the reservoir now, it shouldn't be. Okay. I mean, the issue there, I think, would be if they're on the reservoir and you don't know how they got there, it's probably not an issue. I mean, if you see them going where they're supposed to, it would be the police. But right now, nobody's supposed to be on the reservoir, and I think that's the pressure is to create some ability for people to get on, whether it's a chump down at one point you don't police it or not, but I mean, right now, nobody can get on it.
Yes.
If I could, you know, I think we're placing a valuable resource over there. We've built, we've spent all this money, we're basically going to be able to use the water, which is correct. But people in his neighborhood, people all over can't, like to go in there, be able to have some sort of recreation, whether it be fishing or just walking around, could make a wonderful track there to walk around. Other cities use this to their advantage. I've seen so many of them, I've traveled for thirty years, like many of you all have. And they use it for a walking park, and it's a beautiful thing to walk around there, it's very serene, it's nice, you know. And maybe they don't walk completely around, this one because of the dam. There are lots of different things we could do in recreation there, and have a great park. But we need to get on with this, as Mr. Huffman said, you know, repeating this thing to death, we need to bring in a consultant, that's what it takes, that's it, that's done. Because people in his neighborhood paid for, I think they probably were sold to go good, to be honest with you, paid for a water reservoir to be in their neighborhood that they could actually use, not just see it when they drive by. And I think we need to, as a council, do something responsible. Ask somebody to come in here and let's get this figured out. Maybe it's with TPA, maybe it's with somebody else, but let's get something done about this. And that's use it rather than just have it sit there. But right now, it's just sitting there hoping to water.
I still think, I still think we got, we got sort of a situation here, and that we need someone to come back here and explain explicitly what it is, the reason that people cannot use it. I don't understand. There is an access to that lake now. It may not be the public access that we want to designate down the road on land that we don't own now, but there is a way to get into that place. I mean, it may have a fence, we could have a gate there that you can actually drive up there on that property. So why wouldn't that be public access? At least temporarily until we access, you know, get something else.
I think the only thing I saw on our quick tour out there was that it's rather stink there, and it might be someone that's getting down the, the bank with, that's the only idea. Other than that, I think there's parking available up there, that's fine, I'm with you, but you just.
Well, I understand it might be difficult to utilize there, but, you know, at least be open to them and say, okay, you can do it, but you might have a little water tank getting it until we get this other site. It's a start. We, we would need that, we would need that, I believe. Dyer, you're right, and I'm wrong, I, I believe that the party would have to concur with that, with name of cause. That's what I mean.
Joining on the property, we can discuss with that. How, how are the police getting their boat on there now?
On, joining on the property, it's, it's stored, Mr. Brown, on the, if you go on the lower driveway and you take the left fork, it's stored up that way.
At the top of the dam?
No, sir, not, not at the top of the dam, but on that driveway going up to it.
Okay. Oh, 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 yeah.
There can be, there can actually be two boat ramps, one public and one for the management of the reservoir, which exists, I understand.
Well, the, the word they're using now, can we not make, go ahead and open that up for the time being?
That, that's what I'm saying, that the authority, that the, the turkey, that cop candidate would have to concur with because that management plan dictates that it has to be on city-owned property, it is specific, it says city, city-owned property. So, and, and that may be agreeable, I don't know, they'd have to speak to that, but they have to.
How about, Mrs. Scott, how, how about if you just asked, we can do that?
Let me say something, if you don't mind. I've been involved with working with the state on several of these things, for the years, some reservoir access. And one of the things that the city's going to need to do is do a little coordination with the guys down in the water supply business, because they, I've, I've been in some pieces, been in some horrendous arguments back and forth about what needs to happen. And I think if the city just approaches the right people at the state, say, this is what we're going to do, guys, let's make sure you're okay with it, at the same time proceed probably the, the authority, you know, that you obviously got to coordinate with the company on water, but just my suggestion, keep us out of water. Because they, they, for some reason, they have really strong feelings about boat outs. And I, I've never seen, but naturally you have one boat dock for canoes or two, but some of the guys down there do. And that's just something that the, the city probably do have a, this coordination, but rock.
Thank you. Anyone else here? So what, so who was that gang here?
Give you some suggestions, someone come in and go, what needs to be done, where, do we have an idea who, of someone could be? They might have just volunteered.
Although, what he was volunteering was getting another authority involved, and I'm not sure I want to do that.
To me, to me, Mr. Huffman, the answer, the, the simplest slash most difficult answer to the question is identifying and acquiring the site, and, and, and it's resolved. Identifying and acquiring the public access site, and then it's not an issue.
Then the quickest one would be, until they say no, would be TPA?
Well, it would be subject to them saying yes. It's not just a matter of them not saying no, they've got to say yes.
But if they say no, then we know we've got to go elsewhere.
Right, right.
Let, let's ask, let's ask TPA to come to the next meeting, and we can just ask them outright, what's it going to take? What can we do to achieve what we want to achieve?
Let us try one other approach, and that is, Mr. Huffman, as a, as a resident out there, and Mr. Dyer, Mr. Otavio, and you, and I can meet with Paul Michael, we'll get him back up here, and, and we won't have to, as Mr. Brown said, we won't consume everybody's time for that, and, and press him to give us a yes or no, and I don't mean pressing it disrespectfully, but, but is he going to dance with us or not? And, and if he is, just cut the deal.
We've got a lot of things that, that we're going to be doing together, hopefully in the near future with TPA. And this will be, I think, something very small, and we, we need to keep a good working relationship, but as late as.
I, I believe that Donna was trying to get, Donna Bell, I believe, was trying to get a meeting with you anyway, to brief you because of your stated concern about public access. So I'll check with her in the morning, and we'll try to convert that meeting.
I think that's on the calendar.
Okay, then we'll try to expand that for the purpose.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, I look at the plan right now, everybody satisfied with that, okay. By, by our next meeting, then we should hopefully know a little more certain than we did tonight. Let's see, where are we?
Let me, let me say one other, one other thing real quickly about that. There's one other interest I've had, and deep interest about the dovetail, and I think we might have discussed this week, that the orientation. If it worked out that, that we could develop a fire station out there in that area, and then that addresses the issue of control of, of the public access, of whether or not that fit in with the ISO consultants geographic concerns and issues, I don't know, but it just seems to me like, if that worked, if the geography worked, and, and we could acquire the property, we could achieve two purposes, more than two purposes, by doing so, the management issue, the fire station location issue, the, the access issue could all be addressed with, with one piece of property.
So, Mr. Wood, we could talk to TPA maybe for a temporary, with the idea, because I mean, that's, that's a super idea.
Yes.
And then maybe for one year, and then redo it if we haven't, but we know we're going to have to push fire situations.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Huffman, discussion of the cell phone.
Well, I think this will be a little shorter, and it's a couple of new council members, and, and I think some of our present council members might, would like to have their own private, or use of their own phone versus using city phone in order to conduct business. And I personally would like not to carry two phones. So I'm asking, I've talked to IT, and they say it's about fifty dollars a month is what the cost of a regular city phone for council. And that we allow fifty dollars per council member a month for city phone, cell phone?
You see me smiling?
Yeah.
But they, what I wholeheartedly concur, we had this discussion over a year ago, and just for funny reference, I, I have the only personal cell phone that I use, and I own it. The additional cost that I had to encourage is to get the BlackBerry, and what I billed the city was thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents a month. So they're actually saving money on my phone, and, and I think it's, it's a wise policy if we set a limit that is equal to what we pay for the city phone. But, but I'm biased.
I just said, I agree with that, that's what they should have been doing all along. All right, anyone else?
Okay, thank you. Discussion of the leak adjustment policy and some pricing schedule, and I believe this also means the double flush commozer in this one, aren't they? Mr. Vegasford, do you want to deal with that, out of H?
Out of H, we have a document in here, hopefully everybody's read through it, and it's highlighted the changes that we're proposing. It's pretty straightforward. We tried to make it consistent, the old policies have different dates, due dates, times if you're going to turn off the water meters because you haven't paid your bill, we've got that all worked out. So I'd like to be able to bring that forward after next meeting and get approval, we'll move ahead with that one. Under the leak adjustment, again, we have a similar document that's highlighted in red, where we made some changes, and it's pretty straightforward. The irrigation, we're charging currently nine hundred dollars to put in a meter, would like to have a thought, I'm looking at, to put in for seven hundred. I need to ask Mr. Rush, what was your fees?
The, the other, I'm sorry, what were you saying?
Your fees charged.
I think it's about five, five fifty, somewhere in that area. But in addition to the irrigation meter price, we were talking about including a pressure regulator.
Correct. Twenty-five bucks for, for them to put that in?
Well, no, I mean, the, the, when they pay the, the fee, whatever fee we decide upon for an irrigation meter, we will, the city will now include a pressure regulator as well, because the city pressure is a hundred twenty to a hundred forty PSI at various points of the city, and most irrigation systems are designed to work at about fifty-five PSI. And so people are using more water than they really need to, and if they lower the pressure, it's better for their system, and it also uses less water, so it cuts their, their usage down. I mean, I, I noticed that when we had the water rates, we had all the complaints, and I was looking at, at consumption in my neighborhood, with the water, when the sprinkler systems went on, there was a great deal of water used, and I think more than people realized.
Because of water pressure and increased flow?
Yes, and, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, Joe, we put together something as to how much increased flow you get at increased pressure.
I'll turn this part over to last call.
Okay. The other, the other, the other two things that we're going to do is, as we discussed earlier, is have a rebate for installation of dual wash toilets. And we're working with, with Nathan Ingram to put together a marketing plan that'll go into the water bills, and so that it'll give, and it'll go on the city's website, and we'll instruct them as to what kind of, what are the approved toilets. Lowe's and Home Depot have offered a ten percent discount to the people who purchase the toilet, and once it's purchased and installed, we'll give them a fifty dollar rebate for one toilet, council wants to go to two, as some communities have, we can do that too. So that, that's the one, and we hope by the, by the next meeting, we'll have the whole marketing program laid out, so everybody in council can see what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. And the other thing is to, because of the high water pressure and the irrigation needed situation, we thought we would issue another rebate, a twenty-five dollar rebate for someone to install a pressure regulator on their irrigation system. Now, from talking to some of my neighbors, they had installed it, their cost has been about a hundred ninety dollars to install, install cost, that includes the pressure regulator. And then we just give a one-time rebate on that. So that would reduce, it would reduce consumption, and it would, you know, save a lot of water usage as well. So we hope to have all of that in, in a marketing plan laid out and available to council at the next meeting.
So it would save their repair.
Yeah. Yes, it would, because I mean, people.
So it's a kind of win-win?
Yes.
Anyone else, anybody, anything else? Okay, if I have any questions, follow the next. Okay.
Just change it to the ordinance, want to be done in an ordinance form, so I don't have two meetings, we, we can only have the first meeting and the next meeting.
Okay.
Some of the other things are not ordinance, as it could be done, but changes to the ordinance want to be done as an ordinance itself.
The leak adjustment policy.
Could be adopted, that could be adopted next meeting.
Right. So.
Okay, discussion of city policies and procedures, Mr. Cummins.
Yes, as you earlier said, Mr. Mayor, the tenure of this council is just over two years, and I've looked at the financial procedures, policies and procedures, and they're five years old. We have virtually everybody at this table, with the exception of two, have under five years of service, and it's my intention to work with the city manager to look at all the policies and procedures of the city, the informal ones, the inconsistencies in some of the current policies. I'll give you an example. In the personnel policies and procedures, the council, as they should be, are exempt from them, but the policies and procedures state things that the council is required not to do, i.e. interfere with the administration, sort of contradictory. So it's my intention to look at all policies and procedures with Mr. Wood, and come to council with individual policy recommendations and adopt them on a singular basis, with the eventual goal of putting together a city policy and procedures manual. That's it.
Okay. You're also up for the next item, which is discussion of the water department office.
Well, we're all familiar with the water sewer billing problems that we've had in the past, and from what I understand, the majority of them behind us. A lot of these problems could have been prevented had we either had or utilized good systems controls. We would have caught these problems before they hit the public. And so it's my intention at the next meeting to make a motion that we have a external audit performed of the water sewer billing area, or more specifically, to look into the system controls that exist in this whole new software product that we're dealing with, to ensure that we don't have problems in other areas that may come to hit us somewhere down the road. So financial, I want the financial integrity looked at in terms of the software system, the cross-training of the personnel to handle the different processes in the software, again, the review of the software controls and written procedures to correspond to them. And then I'd also like, or will be motioning, that we look at the consistency of all the adjustments made during our billing problem time, or during the time we had these billing errors.
Thank you. I think, consistent with those items that you just mentioned, and I think you bring up some very, very good points there, I think I would like to ask you, and I'm going to utilize some of the new folks as much as possible, but I'd like to ask that you chair a committee that would, I would want to administrate oversight or whatever, that would basically review all our policies and procedures of the city, make sure they're up to date, where we want to be, and in that review. And in that review, if you find specific ones that need attention, that you bring those with a recommendation from your committee back to this council and if the council concurs, then we go ahead and adopt that one, that individual need there, recognizing that in the long term, we want to have a complete, up-to-date policy manual so that we can look toward ultimately putting it all together. But I think that, I think that if you just say, review all of it and then come back with the whole shebang there, I think that's kind of like biting off way more than you can chew at one time.
Yeah, I concur with that.
So I would ask that if you and Mr. Goodwin, if you would serve on that committee and Mr. Berryxford, you would. So I think also, you know, included in that review is, with your second item there, it's the water department audit, but in addition to that, you could make sure that, you know, the water department audit, not just, not just the financial, but the procedural aspects of how to do about the business and actually take a look at the implementation and make sure that our implementation of our software programs in other areas is good. And if in your discussion with the city manager and CFO, you find problems or anything that this council can, by your committee's recommendation, can improve on by some matter, then we would want to look at it in that perspective, I think. So if you would do that, I would appreciate it. The next item we have on the agenda, council introduced items, I don't believe they have one.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, sir. I was listening there in our discussion about the fire station and the ISO rating and I seem to recall that it costs about half a million dollars to operate a fire station, as to what we learned a couple of years ago. I've kind of done my own little audit over the last week or so, little study, and I've discovered that with, in fiscal year 2011, we gave away five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars worth of free services that we should have been collecting revenue on, that would more than fund the cost of operating at least one fire station. And I told you all I was going to bring this up again and I brought it up again. Our property tax collections was about four point four million dollars last year. It should have been about five million dollars. We gave away twelve percent of it unnecessarily to people who should have been paying for the services they were receiving. And I know this is not a very popular issue, but it's just a fact that our senior property tax exemption that was put in place by a previous administration is highly unfair. It's benefiting people, a lot of people that can well afford to pay for the services. You know, there's always exceptions, but our people sixty-two and over use these roads and police and fire, just like the rest of us do, this young man that spoke up here tonight, barely getting by, that's the kind of people that are paying for these goods and services that we're giving away free to our older citizens that can afford it. And that's why we're getting questions like, why does the city even exist? Justify your existence. Justify why I should pay nine hundred and thirty-two dollars a year just to say I live in Canton. So what I will be doing next meeting, I'm going to make a motion that we abolish this senior tax giveaway. I may not even get a second. I'm going to make that motion and we're going to see what happens if we have the intestinal fortitude that it needs to stop giving away unnecessarily over half a million dollars in revenue. Thank you.
Let me ask you that, do you see it just a senior exemption or all exemption?
The one that I'm talking about is the senior exemptions. I'd like to know if there's other things we're giving away that we need to collect and?
What about home state exemptions?
I'm talking about seniors.
You're not talking about regular home state exemptions?
I'm talking about the people that are living in houses valued up to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that are paying absolutely no property tax on those properties.
That's the only one you're concerned with, the only exemption, no other property tax exemptions?
At this time, yes, sir. That is a highly unfair exemption and there's no reason for it. In fact?
You wouldn't want to incorporate a lower, lower garbage fees on that too, would you?
That'll be next.
That'll be next.
That will be next. There's no sense in that either. In fact, I'd like to make a statement here that I wrote down. I really worked hard on this statement, I was just going to give it to the press, but I'll just read it. "In my opinion, any time an elected official considers giving a special deal to a specific group of taxpayers, they're treading on shaky ground. I believe that giving special treatment to a large group of voters smacks of vote buying and can actually be considered akin to bribery."
Would that go for like military exemptions, disability exemptions and other things like that?
I'm talking about senior.
Miserous people?
Yes, specific for no logical reason in particular. I've not done the statistical analysis, but any of us can ride around and look. I mean, here's a good example right here, seven of us, I guess five of us here are enjoying the benefits of free goods and services.
Maybe more, maybe more.
Maybe more. Well, I'm talking about here at this, the seven elected officials right here. It's going to be an unpopular item with a lot of people, but I'm not running for reelection again, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Shouldn't we include, you know, permanent fixtures or looking at the assessed value of permanent fixtures, like railroads that run across properties to make sure that the properties are assessed correctly if we're going to consider the exemption side?
Well, the county does the assessments and if you want to get personal about it, that's fine, but the county does the assessments and they have assessed my property many times and I pay a good bit of property taxes.
Are you getting any special exemptions? Like conservation exemption on my acreage?
Conservation.
Or anything like that? I mean, I would if it made.
That is a sacrifice that we made. When we put our property on the conservation exemption, we agreed to tie that up forever. No further development is allowed on that property. We paid for that. The people that are sixty-two and over are getting something for nothing. You can call it welfare, you can call it free handouts, you can call it?
Being a landlord.
Whatever you want to call it, but it's something for nothing. And that's not what America's about. America's about people paying their way for what they receive.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know the hour's moving on, but in response, citizens, I am a B-1, that actually you probably won't believe it, but I'm over sixty-two. And I live in the city of Canton. I shop at the stores in city of Canton, so does my wife. I buy my gasoline at the gas stations. I actually get city water and city sewage and also I have garbage collection. And I take it up front to accuse me of not paying my fair share. So I'm willing to state that I think that, I'll wait till, I'll wait till the debate goes.
Well, let's just exempt everybody from property taxes and that young man right there also buys the gas and groceries and everything else that you do in the city, so do I, so do all of us. But you know, if we're going to exempt sixty-two and why not make it, let's see, I'm fifty-three, let's make it fifty-three and up so I can be included too, so I can get free stuff.
Well, you know what's interesting is, as was pointed out, that conservation chunk of land, you don't match that up with getting a freebie. So, you know, it's kind of an interesting, this is okay over here, but this is not okay there. So anyway.
But let me, I want to make the one, I mean, I do think that there is something at a certain level, whether it's sixty-two or what, you eventually get, most people eventually get to where their income, ability to generate more and more income goes away. I mean, it's sort of fixed. I mean, you get here and it's only fixed when you get, like this year, we've got a three and a half percent of social security increase. How about that? How many years has it been since they had one? Three? I mean, you know, the bottom line is, you reach that point and I think that is basically, even though, you know, everyone planned perfectly and the economy stayed great and everybody would have had a great retirement, I think would have been one thing. But most people when you get, you know, sixty-two, sixty-five, a little older, their income is pretty much stabilized and begins, begins to decrease. I mean, you base what you got in the bank there hoping you don't outlive your money.
I'm sorry.
Unfortunately.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I said it wouldn't say anything. But it is gone though, man. Then I actually get an exemption from the county also.
Yes, you did.
And I don't pay school taxes, which is, maybe we should get hold of county and say, look at all the millions we're losing there. And we can carry this thing on as far as we want to, but that's the way it is.
Let's have one more comment here.
Mr. Mayor, the only comment I have is, I don't remember this item being on the agenda for tonight, you know, I'd like to pass it on and it's a valid one to discuss, but let's put it on the agenda.
I think if you're going to make your motion next meeting, I hope that'll be up.
It'll be on the agenda. We're talking under council introduced items, so we are talking within the agenda.
Okay, let's see, what else do we have here? We're in the mayor's report now, let me introduce one thing there. Of course, you know, we had this charter committee that's been working for more than fifteen months now and pretty much came up with a certain amount of recommendations and so forth that they would like to discuss. I think, I think we cannot just let that drop. We've got to pick up with that and I think we need to move forward and make some of the corrections, whatever this body deems appropriate at that time, because we do know that the charter needs to be addressed, there are certain areas in there that that needs to be corrected, there are certain items that need to be more explicit or specific and how we deal with issues and so forth. So I'm, I am going to, to ask that we have appointed a committee of actually three to be a sort of a liaison between two members, particularly I guess I would ask John Rust and Pat Gold, who have sort of taken a leadership role in the, in that committee to only to meet with the committee that I'm going to ask here to kind of, I guess, confer that information that they, and recommendations they have to the committee and let the committee ask them questions back and forth and then come back to this council for further discussion and recommendation. And I would ask that, I want to ask Glenn to chair that one and I've asked Hoodbeak to be on and John as well, Berryxford. So I would like for us not to let this drop and in the next few short months, hopefully we will be able to reach something, have a document that's better than what we have today. The other item I wanted to mention is, two things actually, there was a street committee that was appointed back some time ago and it was to deal with the private streets within the community. Okay, how are we going to deal with it? What are we going to do? Where we've been partially built, no bonds, whatever, within several subdivisions as we know. The street committee, private street committee had John Bill, you were on that one, and Amelia. And I'm going to ask Glenn to serve in Amelia's place since she's no longer here. So anyway, go ahead and like for you to be, work with that committee. The, the only final item that I have, I believe on my report basically, is I would like to go ahead since Amelia has gone off, Amelia was the mayor pro temp, I'm going to ask John Berryxford to serve the next twelve months as mayor pro temp and be consistent with rotating this thing around on an annual basis, that's what we will try to do. So I appreciate you doing that. I believe that's all that I have, unless anyone has anything else. I think I've been here longer tonight and once again, I'd like to go back to, I'd like to go back to Bill's recommendation about a couple, well, maybe a year ago or more, that we try to restrict these things to no more than two hours. I mean, that's probably long enough and hopefully make them shorter. I think in the future we'll be able to be a little more concise. If we do more work at the work session, then we can spend less time. We don't need to discuss it all at the work session and then go and re-ask the same thing at the council meeting. We need to do most of our discussion at the work session and at the council meeting, we need to ask, is there anything new to add that we haven't talked about? And if there is, that's fine, but if there's not, let's try to limit that, make the decision and move on.
Real quick, the updating on the roof, we have had some new damage to our building as a result of the exposure created by the repair process. I would underscore again, I think council made a wise decision in securing the roof engineer slash architect, I think from what I can gather, they have already more than earned their keep in terms of oversight, project management and in particular in their management of some change order requests that have come to us. I think they've already earned their keep. As far as I can tell, that project's on schedule, the contractor will be held responsible for the new damage that has been occurred, there's nothing but compromised structural integrity of the building, but some regal paint and some fallen plaster and that sort of thing that we did not have before. We're going to continue the process of evaluating for asbestos and exactly what we've got, we know we've got asbestos, but exactly what we're going to have to do in the either remediation or containment process. We have extended thus far about a hundred thousand dollars, about seventy to the roofing contractor and about thirty thousand dollars to the engineer, you can call that quality for, I think, two hundred and sixty or so thousand dollars probably, I think that's right. You know, we did not have a light item for that in our budget, that'll have to come from contingency or any other source that you might have got by. We had a hundred thousand dollars, I think, last year, but we didn't have an item in the budget this year, but the product's moving well and I know everybody's going to be excited just to, just to know that we're taking a whole lot better care of this significant asset that we've got. We didn't want you to know about that.
Once again, I appreciate everyone coming. I want to say one more thing, that's congratulate Mr. Cummins, want to congratulate Mr. Huffman and want to congratulate Jack on being on this council. And I'm sorry, we got one more thing?
I'll do that.
I just want to say, you know, the election's over now, we are the team, we are the group that's going to have to make its decision. So we're going to work together and make sure that we truly have a new beginning and move this city forward in the next twelve months. The drop-off site, Bowling Park, Saturday, January the seventh, from nine to four, bring one for the cheer. So bring it, bring it. You hadn't already done away with it?
Not your artificial one.
I bet Richard, Richard, is your still on, Richard? Okay. Is it an artificial one?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. You bring it too. But this is a good thing.
I can't afford a new one on over sixty-two.
All right, thank y'all very much, Howard. We do need a, we do have an executive session, so we'll need a motion to adjourn the exec- We do need a, we do have an executive session, so we'll need a motion to adjourn the executive session.
Go move it. Soon.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. We will not be trying that guy to make a decision. Anything that comes out of that meeting.